Yeah, it was a problem.
You're tired again, cold musty. Made some time for you.
I think they're hoping to replace with something, but they're not, I think they just disappeared.
Probably, yeah, not a good year to plant trees, that's for sure.
Not a good year to plant anything. Water, is the city getting beat up on water? I know the chatter online.
Oh my gosh.
Who understands the differentiation between the departments?
The primary and secondary?
And the city.
And the city.
And the city, and the city council, what our responsibility is, why we're approving, because lots that, you know.
If there's no water.
With no water, why how are we approving lots? It's like, okay. We'll go out and offer will serve letters and all that, you know, we haven't got beat up really good.
Last time I looked, there's no water in the state of Utah.
Yeah.
If, uh.
Pick your spot.
If, if you go look down, you know, the St. Louis Canyon, look at that river, which not only serves super irrigation, but, you know, the sewer system and, but, uh, there's not, there's not much, you know, coming down. You could walk across it, I think, anywhere you want.
Yeah, everybody's after water. These ranchers up in Montana say they've only got thirty days of water. In a lot of those areas up there, so that's what they got. Because they can't, it's not, it's not just us, they think it's.
I can imagine, well, it's gonna be mad for ninety degrees.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be a little too bad, but.
Well, especially if they just shut off the water, secondary water that shuts off, not getting.
Yeah, there's, there's just no water.
Well, there's no water there, they're just gonna shut off and just say, you know, not trying to be, no, too water, too, too watering.
Next, next we have the same kind of year, I can't imagine.
Well.
Yeah.
We know that those times could come.
Yeah. Normal pumps are for the usage. Little weather for that, well, I don't say you don't.
Or pumps, maybe there should be reverse pumps.
Yeah, exactly.
Sending the wrong way, and we probably don't want that water anyway, so.
Oh, what's that?
It's a great solid way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, with the right machine.
Yeah.
Look, Dubai's doing some crazy things out there with.
Oh yeah, the desalination is possible, but I don't think anybody in this country wants to pay that for that water yet, so, but it'll come.
Right, build a Hooper tower, the tower of Hooper. Put it indoors to resort in a few days, that's how we're talking about your.
No, I think.
Well, Dubai actually borrowed all of Abu Dhabi's water money, yeah. Dubai didn't have any money, so they, they went bankrupt and then borrowed Abu Dhabi's water.
Now, from what I heard in my meeting this afternoon at Weber Basin, they were, this is a seventy-five year, you know, since the last time we had anything quite like this, they're saying, and, you know, we're not gonna be the only one, they're gonna be, they're gonna be going to two, two times a week here very soon, like tomorrow, I think they're gonna send out notice, and so.
Yeah, as I said, we, it sounds like we were maybe one of the first to get the notice in there, but you can't be far behind.
No. I think that's Scott Paxman said tomorrow.
They're not, they're not, yeah, they're just.
Yeah, I had three friends that were, oh, you guys are, you know, we're good, I'm.
No, you're not good, all the same water.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, and they claimed that, uh, they had absolutely nothing new in Echo this year.
Really?
Nothing came in.
Because, well, because they're, they're downstream of a couple others that have, um, pretty, more, more senior rights, and those didn't fill, so nothing, nothing came to Echo, so what they're living off is what was there from last year, so.
Yeah, if you go out, just like you were saying, well, Smithmore House or those, you know, there's, there's not any.
Well, I had some friends up in the U S this last weekend, they said, normally you know you stop some snow packs some places, you know, so it's dry and dusty everywhere you want. But you get out and ride, don't you, climbing?
Uh, yeah, back, back a lot, my daughter up there this weekend, she says, there's no smell, so it's like, I don't want to stretch out.
Mayor, can I say something about this possible funding opportunity?
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know whether others of you might have connection with any of our state legislators and that, but, uh, we've now, I, and through our office, we've received information from the state, kind of defining what, what they're gonna do with, uh, water and sewer projects from the stimulus money. One of the things that most interested me was a map from the Department of Water Quality that showed, um, a lot of rural, rural sewer systems, of which ours was on their Hooper, and one of the things that they said that they want to try to make available with a grant opportunity is to pay off existing loans. And, uh, and so, I mean, that, that would just be, I mean, that would be just amazing.
Oh yeah, windfall for us, for sure.
Oh yeah, because then, you know, then, not, then you, you're still collecting, but you're using it to upgrade and to, and to maintain.
You put in the bank for the name for the future use, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So, anyway, the mayor's aware, and I decided to make you aware, but we need to, you know, we need to have some political pressure, like, hey, from our local, don't forget about us, we're here, we have a huge need, you know, we, this, this would, this would save our city, you know.
Recording in progress.
Save so much, you know, in, in terms of helping us so much.
Do you have any contact?
Well, I, I, you know, I don't know if it's Scott Jenkins or Mike Schultz, I, I mean, I don't know.
Probably all of it.
All of them, same, all of them, or any of the senators or the.
Yeah, yeah.
To Buxton.
Yeah, I mean, would it, would it help you to see this information? I mean, I could forward it to you if, if the mayor's okay with that, are you all right with that?
Probably all of it, all of it, all of them are in.
I'm sorry.
Wow, that was the mayor talking without talking.
Or. Oh, give feedback, is that what it is? Like a thirty second delay?
Well, I think we're ready to get started anyway, so, thank you, uh, Tracy, that, I think that'd be really good, for the very same thing you sent me.
Okay.
Well, I think we're ready to get started anyway, so, thank you, uh, Tracy, that, I think that'd be really good, for the very same thing you sent me.
Thirty second delay.
Well, we welcome.
I don't know what it is with that. I've got, I've got mine, so it's not on.
The record part?
We can have that on, you can just tell.
It's gonna be hard. But we can get started with our Hooper City Council meeting for Thursday, June third, twenty twenty-one, and we have Councilman Paulson that will give our, give us the pledge of allegiance, and following that, our reverence will be by Councilman Osler.
Can you stand? Can you please pledge up to me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful to be gathered here this evening in this city council meeting. Please bless us as we discuss the issues that are at hand, that we'll be able to have a, a clear mind and be able to have an open discussion about those items. Please bless, um, us, especially in this region, that we'll be able to receive moisture, um, that we can get through this, this drought that we are, um, experiencing at this time. Also, um, please bless the Sheriff Department that cover our area, that they'll be safe and be able to return home to their families. We're grateful for all thou gives us and help us to be grateful for this country that we live in, and we say his name, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Okay, I've had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting on May twentieth, twenty twenty-one. If you have any questions or amendments, corrections that should be made?
There's one correction, uh, citizens' comments, there was a person named Jason on the minutes, it says Antonio, it should be Tonyoli.
Tonyoli, yeah.
Jason Tonyoli. And that needs to be read. T O N I O L I.
Okay, he didn't sign the sign in sheet, so listening to it, that's the best I got.
That's all I got.
Okay, if there's, uh, no other corrections or amendments, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion where you approve the minutes from, uh, May twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
One second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
I'll.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that, did mine?
Okay, next on the agenda is just if there's any conflicts of interest, group disclosure at this time, but I think from our general, can't imagine there being any conflicts with that, so.
I was talking about the ditch myself on this.
It's like a ten minute delay now.
Okay, at this time, are there any citizens' comments? Anyone that would like to make a comment after looking over the agenda? Okay, seeing then, we'll just, uh, move on to the city business. Our first item of city, city business is, we just need a motion to change the date for finalizing the fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two budget, and we just need to move that back to June seventeenth, so that we can notice that in time.
I can, I can make a motion to change our, uh, vote on the finalized budget from today until, uh, June seventeenth, so we can get proper notice.
One second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? The all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do that, what did you do? Okay, next on the agen- agenda, we have a final plat approval for High Strung Subdivision located at thirty-nine twelve South and fifty-five hundred West. So Tracy will turn some time over to you for presentation on this.
Okay. Get my slideshow to go. That's interesting. Get that out of the way. I'm not sure exactly why that isn't coming in as my show here, it's my, just, it is a slide, but, hang on just a second. Uh, it's not, I'm not even able to move forward in it, hang on. Come back. I don't seem to have the ability to change anything here, Heather, I don't know why. Now, now, I'm just, I'm just gonna move forward like this, I can't.
Did you go to slideshow?
Yeah, I, I've been trying to hit it so that it came up as a slideshow instead of just my slides.
Can you click slideshow?
No, that's the way.
Don't go over to, oops, sorry.
Okay. Now I just need to make it fit the screen.
I think you're presenting now.
Yeah, well, we've been, uh, well, okay, I mean, we've been, we've been more successful, we previously, but I'm not, I'm not having any luck here tonight, so, trying to do with the Zoom and the, and the slides, but we'll just go ahead, there's just a few slides here, not a big deal, but this is, uh, I can't really see how to, how to get this so that it's, uh, you know, covering my screen all the way, let's see if I can look one more thing. Um. No, that's not gonna do it, display settings.
Do we swap?
Swap presenter, there you go.
Okay, we'll go with that. All right, this is the, uh, this is the High Strung Su- Estate subdivision, it's a one lot, it's on two point two acres, it's actually in an R, in an R two zone, uh, along fifty-five hundred West and about thirty-nine hundred South, so this is fifty-nine hundred West, and, uh, yeah, this, this whole property was rezoned quite, quite a few years ago, uh, but it qualifies still for the R two zone, um, it's much bigger, but it, you know, that has adequate frontage here along fifty-five hundred West, uh, to allow it to be put together in this shape, and, uh, so, one lot being considered for final plat approval. Uh, this is actually the, this is the plat right here, uh, L-shaped property, and, uh, like I say, with frontage along fifty-five hundred West right here. Um, you, I don't know if it, if, you know, may be familiar to you from, uh, a previous meeting, because this piece right here came to you a month or s- month ago, it called Christianson Fairway, and so this is just the next one adjacent to it with a different property owner. So this came before the Planning Commission, uh, back in, in May, and, uh, this was the key items from the discussion with the Planning Commission. We, they confirmed that all the items in the city's review memo, memos had been completed, and improvement drawings had, had been updated at that time, so confirmed all of that. Final will serve letters have been received from all the outside entities, Tater West Weaver for culinary, Hooper Irrigation for secondary, uh, final approval from the Weber Fire Marshal, and, uh, then the other will serve letters from, uh, you know, Questar and Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion Energy, Rocky Mountain Power. So all of those things, uh, had been checked off, the Planning Commission saw that everything had been done over the course of, of time with the reviews, and, uh, uh, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion, there was one question about one item in the memo that had been, already been cleared up, and, uh, anyway, they, uh, they voted unanimously to recommend final plat approval, uh, to the city council for this one lot subdivision, so, um, any, any questions on that?
Well, I, I was reading through, uh, the information set out, and it looks like, you know, everything, like you say, everything's been answered, it, the only thing that I saw, there was a boundary dispute, but that has been.
No, that we, we, we received input from Weber County relative to that, uh, from, from the landowner, and so, that's why we were able to okay that, so.
Any other questions for Tracy? Okay, um, Kelly, we may have some questions for you if you want to come up, and maybe we won't have, maybe we've got everything council, but, council have any questions for Kelly Taylor?
Kelly. Why, why do I want another house on fifty-five hundred?
Do what?
Why do I want another house on fifty-five hundred? I'm just teasing.
It's a good screen.
I just haven't gone with the teaser for a minute, so I'm teasing. I, I don't have any questions for her.
All right, well, thanks, Kelly. We'll bring back the council, is there any other discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, final approval for the High Strung Subdivision one lot located at thirty-nine twelve South and fifty-five hundred West.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pretty easy to see when it's unanimous tonight. Three of the years over. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a preliminary plat approval for Miles subdivision, this is a four lot subdivision located at sixty-three hundred West and forty-six hundred South.
So I've highlighted the area right here in red, about two and a half acres, uh, four lots, all of that, that red property is in the, uh, R two zone. Uh, this was kind of the last thing to be rezoned last fall before everything kind of got, you know, put on hold for a while. You notice it is right adjacent, adjacent to a previous little subdivision called Fielding Acres, three lots along here, that now have nice homes on them, and then this is now a proposal from the same developer for four more lots. Uh, this is actually preliminary plat approval, um, if it were three lots, it'd probably be able, they'd be able to do it in one shot, but our ordinance is three lots in minimum, or three lots or less is a minor subdivision, four lots is actually, uh, a regular subdivision, so, just preliminary tonight. This is the plat, one, one additional lot that will, uh, mirror the other three from Fielding Acres, and then three more lots that will front along sixty-three hundred West. So that's, that's the shape, all of these lots comply with the R two zone relative to frontage and size. One of the things that is also happening with this is the continuation of improvements along this street and around the corner, uh, to, uh, to address, uh, the drainage and, and, uh, curb gutter sidewalk, uh, around that, around that corner there, and a continuation of what was built with Field, Fielding Acres. Again, this was in front of the Planning Commission in Martin May, um, and, uh, had to clarify in these notes, uh, so they understood from a preliminary standpoint, we, we as a staff, we were satisfied with the plat and the plans, um, there are still a few things in the, in our, in our memo that need to be addressed for final, but, uh, it had come, it had done most of the work already towards final at this preliminary stage, so, uh, although the Planning Commission was a little bit initially kind of taken back, why, not everything's done, well, it's preliminary, and we were very satisfied with the level of preliminary, uh, submittal that we'd received. Uh, we'd received preliminary or will serve letters from Hooper, Hooper Water, Hooper Irrigation, Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion Energy, we actually have final approval from the Weber Fire Marshal. We will still, for final, need the final approval letters from the two water entities. Uh, we, they, they send a preliminary, and we typically get a final that says that they've met all the requirements of, for culinary and secondary water, so. Once again, based upon all of that, the Planning Commission voted, again unanimously, to recommend final or preliminary plat approval, uh, to the city council for the Miles Farms subdivision.
Any other que- any other questions for Tracy?
With the, uh, recent developments with Hooper Irrigation, and are there any new connections this year? Will that affect this project, or?
As, as far as connections, it, it would.
So, even though we have preliminary.
Right, so they won't be, they'll be able to turn on secondary water this year, but they'll still be able to.
Build.
The, the infrastructure will be there, which is already there, actually.
Water the grass, you're saying?
Yeah.
If they have grass, they.
I think that was my part I mentioned on the bottom of all of our letter that we got here. Okay, so, Brad, maybe we had you come up, so we had you.
Yeah, absolutely, maybe just a side note to the, to the water, we don't have any homes built till next year anyway, so, yeah. And we, we would like to, but it's not gonna happen that quick, yeah.
Well, that answers that question.
Yeah.
And the farmer forest and the hay with no water, so there we go.
Yeah, Brad Miles, um, I live in Syracuse, twenty-three eighty-one, Bluff Ridge Drive, Syracuse, Utah, um, and we're doing this project, like, like was mentioned, we're excited about it, and, and, uh, we appreciate the preliminary approval, and any questions for me? On my dad.
There's a posse, and you. So I could take care of everything.
Okay, cool, thanks, guys, I appreciate it, awesome. Real quick aside note, just so I know how this goes from here, um, just because it's a little hard to get some clarification sometimes when I got less, so I know there's a couple items missing. I'll get those in, and then from there, we have one more meeting, correct, with the Planning Commission for final approval?
And with these guys.
And then one more with these guys, right, and the city council as well, and that shouldn't be yet.
Uh-huh.
Okay, great, awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other discussion with the council? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Too bad we can't circum- circumvent our ordinance in this situation.
Instead of making a.
Go back through the loop one more time?
I mean, it is what it is, but.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat review for the Miles Farms subdivision, as stated in the, right up here.
Second motion?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, approved, unanimous. Okay, at this time, on our agenda, we have a Zoom meeting with Megan Townsend, who's with the Wasatch Front Regional Council, and she's just going to kind of inter- well, I kind of introduced you already, Megan, but you can introduce yourself and just kind of let us, uh, let the council know where we are, where we are on this, uh, uh, amendment, the general plan, or our review of that.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, I'm Megan Townsend, I'm the Community and Economic Development Director of the Wasatch Front Regional Council. I'll tell you a little bit about why I'm involved in this as well, and let me just let you know, uh, Mayor, I can actually only hear your mic, so, um, if there's any questions or anything, I'm happy to take them, we just may, uh, may need to have you, um, relay them to me, Mayor. Okay, so, the, in, uh, two thousand nineteen, the city of Hooper began an application to the Wasatch Front Regional Council and our partners, um, for technical assistance for the general plan. This was to our transportation and land use connection program, um, you may know all about this, but that brings us to where we're at today, working on this plan, um, with the city of Hooper. Up to this point, our process has really been all about obtaining public feedback, and so, um, now from here on out, you'll see more products, you'll hear from, hear from us a little bit more. I'll give you a five-minute spiel today, and then at, in your, um, council meeting on July first, I'll come up and do a full presentation and be able to, um, interact with you and answer any questions that you might have. So we formed an advisory committee that's been working with us for, um, about a year now, on this project, not quite a year. Um, that's made up of planning commissioners, residents, and a member of the city council, um, Cindy Cox. That, uh, our fifth meeting with that committee took place two days ago, on Tuesday, so we're making some progress, um, what we've done so far is we've produced a beautiful website, I'll give you a glimpse of that at the end of my presentation. Um, we've cut two surveys, you may have seen these, they came out in the mail, and they were also, um, distributed online, we had different social media and newsletter platforms. We received a total of twelve hundred and fifty-two responses to that. For a city with the population of Hooper, we're really impressed by the public, um, feedback on those surveys, that's, those numbers are really good. So despite it having been COVID this past year and, um, not doing things in person, um, we're, we're working with really good data from public outreach so far. We've also conducted eight focus groups, um, two meetings in four different topic areas. Those, uh, those are wrapped up now, we got a lot of good information from our focus groups, it'd be anywhere from ten to twenty residents from around Hooper discussing this, a singular topic like commercial development or transportation. Open house, which is probably our most poorly attended event, um, and that is okay, because we are going to do another one of those, um, if not a couple of in-person opportunities to engage with this project prior to it entering kind of an adoption process. We also have had maps on display at City Hall, and so you can see all kinds of scraps there from Tuesday as well, um, but those phone, uh, core, phone core boards have been up for a while, and we had a period where, um, the public could come comment on those. So, um, all of that, it kind of brings us to where we're at today, which is beginning to draft the plan. We still have a few holes in our, in, in what we believe will be going into this draft, and that's really going to be worked out with the advisory committee, as well as in, uh, the public open house, mostly on looking at that future land use map and, and trying to, um, get it tuned out just right. We're not tossing out the plan entirely, we're working with a good, a good general plan that Hooper's had for a long time. Our goal is to make it a little bit more user-friendly, make it something that you, the city council, planning commission, make it something you're picking up regularly, um, something you find is a really good guide for the work that you're doing, um, and justifies the decisions that you're making. Um, our next steps include continuing to. Um, our next steps include continuing to work with the advisory committee on our map work, as well as the draft that we've begun to work on, planning an open house that will likely be in August. Uh, we have not set a date for that yet, but we, we would like to, at that open house, have a draft of the plan present, so we're, we're gearing up for that. While in that open, open house, we'll make any revisions, and, um, we'd love to, to bring things to you again, um. And then we'd also like to table a tomato day, is most likely, and so we'll, we'll see where we're at when tomato days arrives, and, uh, Labor Day weekend, I believe. So, um, yeah, there, there's one other thing to mention here, we have a sub consultant that is going to be working on analyzing some of the FEMA flood maps, looking at the flood-prone areas, and recommending some best practices, it's not our area of expertise, and so we want to bring in an expert that can kind of, um, add to our knowledge there and see if there's any areas of the general plan we can strengthen to protect Hooper against th- those types of issues. That is all I have for you, I'll display our website really quickly and make sure that you have the link. It's, it's a nice website, we've kind of used it throughout the process to, um, have a platform for citizens to get involved, as well as contact information, um, and general information about the product. This is what it looks like, it's planhooper dot weedley dot com. I can drop this in the chat and make sure that you have this link, but it's, it's nice, the clear, this kind of vision, nice, nice poll from our mayor here, there's a get involved tab at the top, and that's had all of our surveys, focus groups, open houses, um, and it has a summary of all of the public open house information, or, uh, public outreach information that I'll go over in more detail in July. Are there any questions I can ask for you at this time?
It doesn't look like we have any questions, Megan.
Okay, I'll expect some questions in July, I'm sure, when we get into more detail.
All right, that sounds great.
Thank you for having me, Mayor, council.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, at this time, uh, on the agenda, we have another citizen's comment. Time, if there's anyone that has a comment they'd like to make, uh, we'd like to limit that to three minutes per speaker.
I wanted to apologize, nobody knows why this, the sounds, um.
She might just have a really good microphone.
I don't know, it turned on everything.
I don't know, I wasn't even connected to audio, so it wasn't anything, I was, I don't know, so.
It's awesome. Okay, seeing that there are no citizens' comments, uh, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Recording stopped.
I have a question on that job that you guys have for an entry level planner. How much experience are you looking for?